Okay, we'll begin the meeting with saying that.
Budget allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Neither is hope, but liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October night's special meeting for the most county commissions. Um, today we are here, well, we're going to start first with tax deed and property appraisal.
Alright, so all property acquired by the county by tax deed must be appraised by the board of county commissioners. At least thirty days before the annual sale. In century code, the annual sale date is set as the third Tuesday in November. The appraised price must be sufficient to cover all taxes, special assessments, homestead credit for special assessments. Penalties, interest, and costs which were due against the property at the time of the service of the notice. Of the foreclosure of tax lien. Plus, an amount equal to the estimated taxes and special assessments for the current assessment year. If the fair market value of the property is more than the total amount due against the property. The minimum sale price of the property must be at least equal to the total amount due against the property. If the fair market value of the property is less than the total amount due against the property. The board shall fix a fair minimum sale price for the property. So you may do that, you don't have to. Um, so I have the list that we compiled with the property and estimated property. Um, property tax and special assessments for the coming tax year. Um, so we have quite a few parcels in graft in. Um, property owners do have until November fifteenth. To pay off what they owe to the county to get their property deed back to them.
Okay, so just so we make it clear then. At our last meeting, we voted to do the.
All taxes due, but I didn't pin up the estimated due for this coming year.
The, yeah, the coming year. So I just want to make it clear so people know why we're acting on it again.
Mm-hmm. And we also have to set uh, an appraisal or reappraisal. Um, of property acquired by tax. After you vote on this. The Board of County Commissioners shall set a date for hearing objections. To the minimum sale price determined, at least ten days before the hearing. The auditor will mail to the auditor of any city or the clerk of the Board of Supervisors of any township. In which appraised property is located. A written notice stating the time when objections to the established minimum sale price will be heard. So we could set that um, objections hearing for the next commissioner meeting. And I can get that mailed out right away. Okay.
Right then.
There was a bunch of properties that were in Adams that were taken off.
Yep, so they, um, okay, so we haven't heard back yet on those properties. Um, Kelly had asked for direction on the Dan Thompson properties. Um, and we have not heard back yet, so those are not included right now.
Those are still involved in litigation?
Yeah, crypto.
Uh, no.
Oh.
Uh, litigation related to um, a lawsuit that's pending against the county and, you know.
Does that mean they can't be foreclosed upon if they're in litigation?
Um. Not necessarily. That's why I'm waiting to hear back.
So we'll wait to hear back.
I think you can include those in there and we can always take them off.
Okay. Alright.
But I don't know. Yeah. I don't know what you want to do. Because though, if we decide, we can't decide to put them in after, if they're not included, right?
Think you can add.
Can we add them later?
I think we can add them. So we have to publish this list. Once we hear the objections. So we do have time to add them before we publish.
Okay.
Um, but I can ask.
So would we have to go? But we have to do that by notice to the city though, too?
Yeah. Would we, would we have to give them time to object again?
Right, I feel, I feel with the Stanford Adam now.
I, I'm sorry, I thought they were already added in that.
We had them added and then we.
Hooked them up?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I can go print, print another list with them and then.
Yeah, let's, let's do that so that we have them.
Okay, sounds good.
I, I, I guess if it's alright with the rest of the commissioners, I would prefer to. In there and remove them, then we remove them.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that sounds good.
You know, it needs to be ten days our hearings, they can't get for fourth. Maybe, you know, November falls. Don't you have a deadline of October thirtieth on these two for something?
Is this something new?
No, we did this last week, it's always confusing. The, the, to me, yeah, I know we did this with setting this price.
Yeah, right.
The uh, ten days prior, I don't remember that either, but.
I wonder if that even.
I'm not gonna trust my memory. Just so you can go back to it.
Did we, when you said we had what was against them? That when she said estimated for this year, was that always included too? I don't remember.
Like last year.
Was it?
We tend to have another hearing.
Right, it's century code though. They don't make it easy to understand.
Things have something all the time.
But I do know, then the last meeting, then we cross off some because they had paid. And we had three other top that we crossed off because they paid that day or day before. And hopefully this list will decrease quite a bit.
And shop around your action skills.
Oh my, by the way.
You can delegate that out.
I, I think we're gonna delegate that, right?
Pretty, pretty, pretty.
I am not an auctioneer. If anybody would like to go on the tier, I'd be more than happy to pass it off.
I need that bad, you can go for it.
Like torture me.
Part of the job. So you're gonna take that as a resume.
When is that? November first meeting in November?
It was the third Tuesday.
The eighteen.
Eighteenth of November? No, we're.
Yep.
Yeah, eighteen of November. Best thing.
Who was, who was the auctioneer that used to sing the auctioneer song? Remember him? He was around here. Uh, he could sing that, there was, he do that wedding dances and whatever.
Oh, oh.
Huh?
Steve Mathew did it.
No, but there's an older guy then, very, we can use to do that. See, I'm getting too old because I remember him, but. Nah, no, yeah, this used to do, but this guy was a, you know.
Probably way truer. That's possible.
Do you ever hear that when they sing it and do it, it's pretty. Maybe then. God, that's getting to be a thing of the past now with all these online auctions.
No.
We should take a break.
I'm sure.
I was with Ireland many, many, many auctions and I never heard it singing it. When in Ireland?
No, I remember it.
I'm not saying he couldn't.
No, no, I will say he couldn't.
Okay. That's on record now.
I know Ireland won't know.
He was a really good auctioneer.
Now having the auctions, we liked a lot of socializing. Well, we ended used to go to those auctions and.
They just don't have a thing.
Yeah, you think about all the farms that were around here forty years ago, fifty years ago. No. Graduated fifty-two years ago and that was when the, when the missiles surrounded, everything was full buses, you name it.
La Colma was buzzing.
What?
La Colma was buzzing.
Yeah, for one day, all that for one day.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Alright, and Kelsey are gonna bring the updated sheet in here.
Okay.
Um, do we, do we wanna reveal the ones that we have in front of us?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Have they changed?
Um, oh yeah, they changed because we added. An estimate of this coming year's due into the price. So.
Witnesses losses were waiting.
Yeah.
We can't.
Okay. So the first parcels on the sheet are all ungrounded in. Um, and then I, I made a mistake when I said they have until the fifteenth. They actually have until the, the start of the meeting of the sale.
The day of fit.
Yes, so they have until the day of the sale to pay. Um, so the first parcel, um, in graft in here. Um, thirty-two thousand of audit specials um, for the city. Second parcel, this is an empty lot. Twenty-six thousand. Um, a lot of specials on the lot. Um, third, third parcel house, um, one thousand nine hundred and eighteen. Um, the fourth and fifth parcels by coastal investment is, those are empty lots. Um, the parcel after that one. Um, I don't know because I did not, I don't remember.
That's a big lot.
Yeah, empty lot. Um, the parcel after that, um, has specials on it, that's a house. Um, the next three parcels is the old Hardee's lot. And the land around it. Um, the next parcel is in Park River. Um, and that's a house. Um, the next parcel is in Forest River. Um, and then. So the next three are the um, Drew parcel and the Carol parcel are in, those are in Forest River as well. Um. The next one is in Conway. And then Edinburgh. Um, one in Fordville. And then Lincoln. And then, um, Adams and two in Fairdale. And then the ones, the updated ones, Kelsey will be bringing us are in now. Did you guys wanna change any prices? Or any minimum bid?
Where was the last one at?
Um, the last ones are in Fairdale, the last two parcels are in Fairdale.
Yeah, I believe at the last meeting, we voted to go with prices as listed. Um. Do that again.
You wanna wait until we get it though?
Yeah, but. Yeah, I think with the following means, we should have a motion since we're including that. Current year, is it?
Yes.
After changing the values.
Already done that, right. Soon as we get the updated list, we can work out.
You know, in a moment, what happens to, and gets money in a moment.
And the property remains in the, um, under the county, so, yeah. The remains. And then I believe that we offer cities the option to buy the property. After the tax sale.
Most likely.
I brought mine too. Sometimes y'all often have to look in back at old minutes or something, it looks nice to have. My apologies to those of you who are here for the public budget hearing, we're running a little bit behind.
I'm tired.
It's not a bad gig, is it?
No, it's not bad at all. Even the stuff I know that I was thinking, man, I've had so many meetings. Just retired people, there's a lot of stuff to do.
Yeah, when they know you're available.
Yeah, that's the, that's the issue.
Yeah.
Very. No. My dad was seventy-eight. He died that day. Died that day.
He was what?
He died. I mean, he made it home at this twelve o'clock, he died, but midnight, I mean.
And he did what he liked the last.
Yeah. He went out in the field, huddled on, uh, did, didn't quite make it to the end, but. He was gone by shortly before he died, like the same.
Last weekend, my dad was alive, he did almost all three of what he really loved. Saturday night, he played in the band, Sunday night, he sang in the choir. And Sunday, they went to the casino and Monday morning, he died. And so on.
Yeah, then we can.
He didn't, we pretty much wanted him, or liked.
Alright, here's updated.
Here's.
The rest of the Adams parcels are at the bottom.
Thank you. Okay, so is this guilty one in the same situation?
Yeah, they're all, yeah, they're all the same.
So it may possibly be removed.
Yes.
Depending on this litigation.
Yeah, they may possibly be removed, so.
Okay.
Um, the bottom parcels, um, ninety-three thirty-six. Twelve thousand three ninety-two, fourteen thousand nine forty-three, eleven thousand seven forty-six, nine thousand three thirty-six. Again, oh, that was listed twice, so. And then eighteen thousand four seventy-four twenty-one.
Okay. So there are the updated values.
Um, I will make a motion to accept the list with estimated, the estimated tax changes. For the.
To include the current year. Okay. Alright, I have a motion in a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing the automatic role, Amy, yes, Danny.
Yes.
Oh, thirty-six, myself, yes, motion carried. Thank you for giving that.
Yes, I.
No apologies necessary, you are in the ground in here, it's in one of the years. Okay, uh, now we can go on to the final budget approval. And again, Christina, you're up, I'll let you finish making your note then.
Um, okay, so final budget approval, um, looking for direction from Kelly on. What we can include in our final budget. Or what was voted on for the type of projects now.
Logan.
Um. Okay, so I see this essentially as two questions. One being, can you amend the budget prior to October tenth? Um, and that, um, is yes, you do have the authority to amend the budget. Prior to October tenth, but you may not go over the preliminary budget amount. So you can levy those ten mils, but then you need to.
Reduce.
Reduce in other areas, so that you stay within the dollar amount for the preliminary budget.
Okay.
Um, what, what got me. What gave me pause in reaching that decision was the fact that the, um. HB eleven eighty-seven did remove the need for the counties to do the estimated budget. The need for the taxing districts to send their preliminary budgets to the county auditor by. Um, a certain period of time, but still in the interpretation of publish, um. You're still required to, um, in, in essence, have that, that, that preliminary budget was published by your passing of the preliminary budget. So we are limited in those terms. And may I just say that it's very confusing. So I'm not the only one who's confused by it, so, but those, um, that I believe is my opinion, not me. Any questions?
I appreciate your direction. Paul.
Um.
So, uh, just to be clear, if, if you levy these ten mils, do you have to lower the ten mils in the same fund?
No. You just can, you can lower the ten mils.
Overall budget.
In the overall, you can move things around to different funds. Um, but you may not go over that dollar amount of the preliminary budget. Um, that amount that was published, but you are allowed to move things around, there's attorney general's opinion on that. There's also, um, it also says that, um, I think the tax director has made it clear that you are able to, um. Move things around. So, as an example, within the county general fund, things may be shifted from one department to another, but the total budget. Um, may not, for the general fund, may not exceed what was proposed for the estimated statement. So you're probably right, you can't move it from fund to fund. I, I don't know, there's an attorney general opinion that says though that you could. Yes, you could add a levy and then reduce a different levy. That's clear, that there's an attorney general opinion on that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions to clarify that?
Yeah.
But these other funds that are guaranteed by century code that are. Don't we have to honor those limits?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's just the discretionary fund, so to speak, that we could move around there.
Yes, and you know, I have to apologize because I am not an expert in budgets.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't fully, I didn't have time to fully comprehend what goes into figuring out budgets and. So, I don't understand that, I just know that there is attorney. Like, for instance, there was a McHenry County thing, they, there was a mandatory levy they had to do. And they didn't include that in their preliminary budget. So, the attorney general said, yes, you need to add that levy in it, but you may still not exceed the preliminary budget amount. So you have to subtract it from some other. Source. Within that budget.
But we couldn't subtract from like the water board, you know, where they have guaranteed.
Because they're guaranteed, right. I do not believe it can.
Yeah.
No, you still have to honor statute orally what you're required to have.
I have a question, no, I forgot it.
Well, I'm sort of happy it went that way. To be honest with you, I've been here how many budgets and it's always said that we can't go up, but we can go down. And I had a, I was thinking about this and I said, you know what? I wanna state to the fact that we've done it every year. We told, told the library they couldn't go up and I said, what is it gonna look like if we increase ours can?
Just so you know, it no longer really says that.
Yeah, no, but.
I mean, it's implied because that's, it, it's definitely implied. And for municipalities, for cities, it's very clearly laid out in century code, but that doesn't apply to counties. So, um. Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, well, I just. What it is, we take it from the launch. We no longer doubt it the way it looks.
Oh, I know what my question is now. I think he used the word, was it mandatory? So this went to a vote of the people, that, that's my concern, so this, this ten mils went to a vote of the people.
Yes.
Was that mandatory that we included then and that we reduced elsewhere?
It is not mandatory, not statutory.
Okay.
So it allows us to, that vote of the people allows us to. So it allows us to, that vote of the people allows us to levy those ten mils for a period of time.
Okay, so, so we're fine there, I just wanted to make sure, so basically, we go this year without those ten mils. And next year, and next year, we all make sure we have big notes everywhere to include them, I mean, it was an unusual thing. It's highway mills, you know, capital project, uh.
Well, on the outside, our taxpayers save some money, yeah.
For a year.
For a year, for a year, yeah, it's, uh.
It's just so confusing, those capital projects, since we've done them, it's just, I mean, and then, and not blaming you, I said, we went through personnel here and, 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 and I still don't understand.
Well, and I believe that capital projects levy was meant to replace the ten mils that expired, it was.
But we already had one capital project, so I think we thought it was in there, and it wasn't, and it just, it's, it's cumbersome, put it that way.
Well, thank you very much, Kelsey, I appreciate all your research and your help.
Your honor.
Thank you. All right, um, I, I believe we have some, you two here for public comment, would you guys like to talk about anything?
I put it after.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, you're good, all right, so I have the final budget then.
Final, final, final?
Final, final, final. And this doesn't include the, for that, and to weed control.
Thank you.
So like you said, it did come down a little bit, the capital projects in the room.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, we went back to the original, capital projects in Golden Bridge, that was still a little bit different, but that, oh, she told us, I don't know. I feel like after what she said, we could have taken the reduction in weed control, and we could have switched that over to Golden Bridge.
The back, you have change, no, is it?
Um, it was.
Forty-sixty, I don't even remember.
Oh, no, so, two hundred and thirty-five thousand was the original number, and went down to a hundred and eighty-five thousand, so fifty thousand.
Don't wanna mess with it.
I.
Okay.
That's a small thing, right?
It would have almost covered our sixty thousand dollar loss on Golden Bridge, but, well, plus the ten mils.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, save a little time to go through it.
Yeah. I mean, so fifty-nine point two eight mils for county general, nine point eight four mils for capital projects, twenty-nine point five one mils for Roden Bridge, two mils for county agent, one point two three mils for veteran service, two point three mils for public health, one point eight seven for livelihood, point two five historical society, three point nine eight for water resource district, one point three two for Red River Joint Water, point zero four for Devil's Lake Water, two point six eight, that was a reduction from last meeting for weed control, two point five for soil conservation, and three point nine nine for job development. Bringing our, and one for the state levy, so bringing our total mils to a hundred and twenty-one point eight. Last year, the total mils were at a hundred and twenty-two point eight four.
Paul took.
I win.
So is, there's still money in here for county administrator?
Yeah, that was in the county general.
How many general?
County general, this is what you guys approved for county general, it was at, um, fifty-nine point six eight mils before we reduced some of the costs there, and that did, and this number does include also, um, Chris Larson and the county administrator.
How much is in there for the county administrator?
The seventy-five thousand.
The reason I brought that up, I think we learned something here, we are needed for county administrator. It just shows us, we lost six hundred and ninety-five thousand, and I think if we would have had administrator, we would have caught this. And I'm just, I've been a fan of this, and I said, this is a prime example. We all sit here and we admit we didn't really know what was going on, we didn't understand it, you couldn't expect her to, and with the passage of all our employees, it's gonna get critical every time, when the state says something, and if we change people up here, how do we keep track of it? And that person with the good one, I think, would have caught this. And that's, that's all we're saying, and I think it's time we move forward and think about administrator, cause it, this is, this cost us.
I, I I think we need to give Christina some time, she's had four months. She's had four months, and administrator, yeah, maybe if an administrator had been here for a few years, might make a different story, but we've had to change over employees, Paul.
I think this started in the highway department, though, it was the highway department that did bring forward a, a budget for those ten mils, that wasn't her. So, I think there's plenty of blame to go around, including everyone sitting here.
Yeah.
We all talked about those ten mils, but nobody made sure they got added, so. But in my mind, the highway department is where it should have been brought forward, I don't, I don't think that should have been put on Christina, but I agree with Ernie. I'd like to see us, um, we're, we're adding a hundred and twenty-five thousand or something like that to our carryover, I'd like to see us take another fifty thousand out of that and put it towards the county administrator, because the reality is, is we've lost ten mils two years in a row. Um, be- because if that election would have happened prior to twenty twenty-four, we would have got those ten mils this year too, so, so that that election should have happened in twenty twenty-three or in twenty twenty-two, cause that was all in state law, that this was changing. The state law changed, so we weren't, we, we should have anticipated losing those ten mils, um, is what I'm saying. And the idea of, uh, to me, a county administrator is going to help shepherd these things through, it's going to, it's, it's, it's a someone who's looking at the big picture, and I've said it before, our department heads aren't looking at the big picture, they're looking at their little silos. And that's where the problem is, and so I agree with Ernie, um, a department head will create consistency, prioritize spend, or prioritize spending on projects, streamline budget and financial analysis, analyze health insurance.
Paul, I, excuse me for cutting you off, but aren't we supposed to, we're here for a special meeting for budget, not to sell everyone on the position of an administrator today? We haven't even taken that to a vote of the board, so I think we're getting a little off topic.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sure that we would add fifty thousand dollars to the budget for the county administrator line item. Take it out of the cash carryover and add it to, to the seventy-five thousand, so it'd be a total of a hundred and twenty-five, that's my motion.
Yeah, we'll motion to that second, second. Any discussion, Christina?
How much?
Fifty thousand.
Okay, so for your preliminary budget for county general, it was at four million, a hundred and twenty-six thousand and thirty-three dollars. So um, that's only about, like, twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, to not go over the county general preliminary budget, but you could, you know, we did talk about this previously, where you can use your cash reserves when costs come up after a vote of the commissioners. So in county general, it looks to be about twenty-eight thousand, you would be able to have. Where is it? Jason?
I just want to mention that twenty twenty-two was brought up for petition to go for the mils to do the capital project, plus the additional ten, the commissioner at that point in time decided it wasn't appropriate to go for the change for the, for the ratio to vote the full thirty, and asked for that. So it was pushed back for a year.
I agree with you, Justin.
For bringing that up.
Right, and, and I wanted to bring that up as well, we, it was a choice, it was a decision by the commission, because we thought it was too big of an ask to spread out, twenty mils that was, so we had to spread it out, it wasn't that we missed it, it was, it was voted on by the commission. So, all right, um, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
Well, we can't, we can't do the, yeah, as long as you ask for it, you can't do it.
I thought you were, it was based on carryover, not.
That's originally what it was based on, was carryover rate, isn't that what you?
That's what I said, is take it out of the carryover, but she's saying we're gonna be over the three percent.
If you add it to the county administrator line item in the county general budget, you're gonna be over your preliminary county general.
I think we just leave it, if we hire somebody, we just dip into the carryover, easier.
I'd like to give it some more thought, I'd like to pick your brain about, how do you like to see this more shared?
Sure.
And I guess this is just for budget, you just have the money there if we do it or whatever.
Right?
So, do we withdraw the motion?
I will withdraw the motion if that's how you wanna handle it.
Well, I'm just wondering what's best to do here.
Because we can't.
We can't do it, right, so I would think withdrawing would be the best, yeah.
I guess we could amend it to the twenty-eight thousand. And that's kind of a happy medium.
That's a small bet, I, you know, I'd agree, move forward to take it, you know, we really don't know when we're gonna hire somebody or whatever, so.
We haven't even voted on the fact of, we're going to hire someone, we're putting the cart before the horse.
And that's why I'm saying it, cause we, we haven't done anything to, might take a half a year before we decide it, if we would.
So, the money will be there if you would have, so. The money will be there, if we choose not to, the money will still be there, whether it's in that line or it's in cash.
Right, so, so, hey, your name is, I'd say.
It's kind of what we asked our department heads to do, right? When we asked to our bigger departments. Same thing, so, all right, motion is withdrawn, fair? Am I?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, any other discussion on the budget? Okay, hearing that, I'm going to take role, Danny.
Yes.
Amy, yes, Bernie.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried. Now we can say fine, fine.
Yeah.
Now we can say fine.
Okay, and we do not have anyone for public comment periods, right? I'm sure Danny did, it's a public hearing, so I guess we don't even have to go down that. Or we do have one on the budget.
I think that you made the motion through the final budget.
We did it.
Okay.
Oh, we did it, okay.
Thank you guys, okay.
I thought you were just asking for a yes to.
Okay, oh, I thought.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve the final budget.
I'm just going back to the motion he made, uh, to, for the administrator, that's what I was going back to. Okay, let's start this over, okay, are you making, you said.
I'll make a motion, we approve the final budget.
I have a motion of a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll take role, Paul.
Yes.
Bernie.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Amy, yes, myself, yes, motion carried.
Okay.
I'm gonna call you, sorry, me time. No, give me words, I'm.
All right.
Ready to give words?
That is the budget? That is it.
Okay, and we don't have a public comment, cause it's a public hearing.
Correct.
All right, and you, you can't have anything else, meeting adjourned.